May I just call this meeting to order? Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Qui. The United States of America. And to the public. One nation under one. In the full of liberty and justice for all.
Start with a roll call.
Council President Albersen.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Perez. Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Council President.
Move to excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Albersen, second by Councilmember Prince, that the absent council member be excused. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. So tonight, we're gonna start off tonight with a special presentation from King County Emergency Medical Services Levy, and we have Michelle with us tonight, Michelle Plord. Yeah.
Evening, Michelle Plord. I'm the EMS Division Director, and I've prepared a little presentation for you, so... But I do need my notes to make sure I don't miss anything. Well, I want to say good evening, and thank you for allowing me to come and share a little bit of the work that we've been doing this past year to ensure that the MedicOne Emergency Medical Services system continues uninterrupted until the next levy period. So I've prepared a few slides, and they're sort of about half and half into describing what our system is, our EMS system, and why it's important to us, but also sharing a little bit about the outcomes of our process and giving you some insight into that work and how it's been organized. Hopefully, there's enough time at the end to answer any questions you might have, but also feel free to follow up if you have any afterwards, and I'm happy to, if I can't answer them here, or they come up afterwards, happy to answer those as well. So, oop, go this way.
See it works? Try the arrow.
Yeah. Sorry about that. All right, so the current MedicOne EMS levy expires at the end of this year, and that prompted our regional leaders to come together and say, what do we need to do to put together a plan that will take us into the next levy period? Due to the regional nature of our system, there are many different partners that come together. We hosted an intensive eight-month process overseen by the EMS Advisory Task Force that allowed us an opportunity for people to weigh in, debate the issues, raise any local area issues, and come together with a plan that would take us into the next levy period. In order to place the EMS levy on the ballot for the voter approval, it requires a minimum of 75% of the cities, in this case, nine out of the 11 cities that are over a population of 50,000. And in addition to that, the King County Council. So what is... Oh, back over here. What is... Am I doing something wrong? Jinxing it. Okay. That one.
This one.
Ah, right, one, three, yeah. So what is the MedicOne EMS system? Well, anytime you call 911 for a medical emergency, you're accessing that system. We're known worldwide for our excellence and our innovation, and we regularly get people come from all over the world saying, how do you do it? So we serve over 2.3 million people in the county, and we respond on the average every two minutes. In 2024, we responded to over 255,000 calls in King County, and in 2023, the survival rate for cardiac arrest, which is our gold standard for how we measure EMS systems, was 51% throughout the region. In comparison, we're two to three times higher likely to survive from a cardiac arrest than other places in other cities. So that's pretty remarkable in our view. So here's some statistics for the Renton Regional Fire Authority. They're the agency that serves the city of Renton. I wasn't able to get down to the city of Renton, but here's some statistics for... Serving over 138,000 in 2024, responded to over 25,000 calls, and had a response time of about 5.35 minutes on average. And the cardiac arrest survival rate in this region was 68%, so doing very well. So what happens when you dial 911? Well, if you, anyone in this region who's experiencing a medical emergency can call 911 and access one of the four comm centers, and a dispatcher or a telecommunicator will ask you a series of standardized questions. And the thing that's really important is those questions are really important to help decide whether an EMT or an emergency medical technician is gonna go out on that call from one of the 23 departments in the county, Renton Regional Fire Authority being one of them, or whether they need an additional layers of help for more life-threatening emergencies. And they would get a response from one of the five Advanced Life Support, or ALS, agencies in the region. In this case, down here, it's King County MedicOne that would respond. So why does our system work so well? I really find it important to say, how are we grounded? What are our values? And so one of our strong values is that we're a regional system. We took the time to bring people together from across the region to debate about what we needed, to look at the finances, to also bring them together to figure out if there were things in the community that needed to be addressed, and that happened during this period. We're really proud of that. We also have a tiered system, which I described in the last slide, and it's founded on science and medicine, in the sense of, we adjust those questions to make sure that we're getting the right level of care, and that tiered system is really important to us. It also preserves the paramedics, who are the highly trained. They have over 2,500 hours of training up at Harborview for both clinical, classroom, and field experience. And so we want to make sure that they are going to the calls where they're most needed. The other aspect is that we're equity-driven. We want to ensure that everyone in the region has the same, access to the same high-quality care, and so we work with communities to ensure that. What are we working, what is working, what is not working, and how can we improve? So the idea behind improvement is part of that fourth bullet, which is, we're trying innovative things. We tried a couple levy periods ago, Mobile Integrated Health as a pilot, and now in this levy period, we have expanded across the entire region, and you'll see in some of the recommendations that we're enhancing it, and not only loving it, but enhancing it. And the last thing is, is that we're funded by a levy. It has proven to be stable and reliable, even in the good times, but more importantly, in the difficult times. And I've been through a few levies myself, and I've seen that in action, and you'll see how it plays out when we're looking at a risk analysis. So some of the things I wanted to share with you quickly are the considerations that we brought to the task force. As you all know, population in the area has grown tremendously over the last couple decades, but it's variable, right? You can see in the map that some places have really had high growth in population and others not so much. But that's one of the things that also drives call volumes. So if you can go to the next slide, this shows you population in the gray columns going steady, increasing over the last seven years. How that has impacted our call volumes, though, was interrupted by COVID, by the pandemic in 2020. So we were running pretty high, dropped during the pandemic, and then really shot up, particularly when it came to the BLS or the EMT response, that's that blue line on the top. Luckily, over the last couple years, it steadied itself, and we're really happy about that. One of the things, though, that we also track is our response times. So you can see over the five years that even though we had higher call volumes, higher population, the average response time remained very steady. And that indicates to us the resiliency of our program, but also the capacity. And so we continue to monitor that even during the levy period, and we will continue to monitor it to make sure that our service is what we need in the community. All right, one of the other things that we tended to during our deliberations is the increasing diversity in our community. This came from the stats at the county, that over the last couple decades, that there's been an increase in diversity, particularly communities of color, of Asian and Hispanic origin, and multiracial communities. And in addition to that, you can see on the right in the red bar graph, that there's also been increase in residents born outside the United States. And that's important to us to make sure that we're drafting and creating programs that meet those needs across the county. One of the other things that that leads to is multilingualism in our population, and it's variable as well as a population growth. And you can see there that there are variable impacts to different communities, and we need to make sure that our folks have access to 911 in a language that they are comfortable in. And so we're trying to make sure that the programs that we have and the connections that we have to community help support their access to 911. Well, actually, and not only just access, but access to the care as well. So making sure they understand that interpreters are available and not just kids or other people or strangers, so we want to make sure that they have good professional interaction. All right, so that's the background. I want to jump into the future, i.e., what are the things that we needed to do in order to plan for this, for the next levy period? One, we needed to identify our programmatic needs. We need to develop a financial plan to support those needs. We also needed to make sure that there's sufficient reserves, because there are things that can happen. We're planning eight years in advance, all the way through to 2031, and so we want to make sure that we have sufficient reserves for our services. The final thing is that we also needed to recommend a levy length, a rate, and ballot timing. So one point of clarification is that since the beginning of the EMS levy, the regional one, since 1979, the city of Seattle has received the funds that raised in their own city, and they manage that on their own, independently from the rest of the county. While the balance of King County funds are collected across the county, and then we distribute that out according to agreed-upon plans and formulas, and so I wanted to keep that in mind. So before we jump into the details of the planning, I want to share a little bit where we are. We are in a six-year levy, obviously the last year. The starting rate of this in 2020 was 26.5 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. That is expected to generate about 1.1 billion over the six-year period. That's including Seattle and King County. The part that funds King County programs, though, is about $664 million, and those funds go to completely fund the ALS or Advanced Life Service, the paramedic layer. It gives a contribution to the basic life support of the fire departments who send out the EMTs. It also funds 100% the regional services and strategic initiatives that are across the region. And some examples of the regional services are our medical direction, our data collection to make sure, our systems analysis, and our region-wide initiatives, like Mobile Integrated Health. It also funds the reserves for the balance of King County. So the cost to a homeowner in 2020 was $159 based on a $600,000 median home price in 2020. So it gives you an idea of what it costs individuals in our community. So the EMS Advisory Task Force that I mentioned already was a governing body filled with 20 elected officials. Our very own mayor represented the city of Renton on this task force, and we also want to acknowledge that he participated in chairing one of the four subcommittees, and thank you for that extra work that you did. We really appreciate it. There are representatives from the 11 cities over 50,000, Sound Cities, Fire Commissioners, and the King County Council, and it was chaired by the Execs Office. I mentioned there were these four subcommittees for both ALS, BLS, Regional Services, and Finance to figure out the programmatic recommendations. So here we are at the task force's recommendations. There are a couple recommendations that I did not include here. They were sort of technical, financial recommendations that are small. I wanted to sort of cut my slides and not have too much detail here. And again, the programmatic recommendations are first outside the city of Seattle, but the total financial package includes the entire region, which includes Seattle. So for the ALS Subcommittee, they recommended continuing using this unit allocation and to inflate it by CPIW plus 1%. They also recommended putting a placeholder should increases in call volumes or population merit the addition of additional service, but at this time, it's considered a placeholder. We also did a placeholder in this levy period that we did not need, so we're carrying it forward over into this next levy period, and you'll see the impact that that has in a couple slides. The last recommendation is to continue to use reserves and contingencies to cover costs that might fall outside of the paramedic allocation. The BLS recommendations, first of all, were to increase total BLS funding by $5 million starting in the first year. It's going to be split, the recommendation says, to put $3 million of that into the basic allocation for BLS, and then to also support Mobile Integrated Health, very popular program, helping local jurisdictions a lot, and put $2 million, the balance in that, into the Mobile Integrated Health. They also recommended inflating by CPIW plus 1%. And then they also recommended distributing or making a slight adjustment to the distribution of BLS funding in a 60/40 split, call volume to AV. The last recommendation was to support the Fire Chiefs Association Mental Wellness and Equity Inclusion efforts, and we really felt strongly about that. All right, the last Subcommittee, Programmatic Subcommittee, was the Regional Services, and they recommended continuing delivering the programs that already exist that are essential to our functioning. They also recommended enhancing a couple due to local area needs, and specifically the initial EMT training. We're seeing a lot of hiring going on, and so we're needing to support those efforts in addition. And then the second recommendation for expansion was to renew the telephone referral program, which helps mitigate those calls to our BLS partners, and to expand it so that we're bringing it up into more modern form of a telephone referral program. The third recommendation was to maintain and/or develop new strategic initiatives, and so the community-based partnerships, otherwise known as ECHO, was supported to continue. The data systems improvements, otherwise known as PRIME, was also suggested, recommended to continue. And then there's a new initiative that was recommended, that to make technical improvements to emergency medical dispatch, so those telecommunicators and those comm centers. That's who's gonna be getting that. So if you wrap up all those costs together, the pie chart gives you an idea of the proportion, and the majority goes to the ALS program, which makes sense because they get, this is their only source of funding. Second to that is the BLS or the fire departments, followed by regional services and strategic initiatives. The table on the right shows what the dollar amounts are, and again, this is for the six-year levy period, and it totals $919 million. Out of that, for the BLS, since Renton Regional Fire Authority is a BLS agency, in 2025, they got $2.7 million, of which $448,000 was for their MIH program. What's estimated to be in 2026, and we don't know this for sure, because we don't know what the exact dollar is gonna be in 2026, in terms of raising the funds, is estimated to be about $3.37 million total, with about $648,000 going to MIH. All right, so all those programmatic recommendations and those costing for those came to the Finance Subcommittee, and they looked at two things. One is to conduct a risk analysis to look at what are some of the things that might come up during the next levy period that they need to mitigate. And then a second piece was to find sufficient reserves for that mitigation. And so I wanted to go quickly through what some of those drivers are. On the revenue side, what's that first assessed value gonna be on that first year of the six-year levy? Second, what are our projections on new construction? That's an important factor as we go forward through the levy period. What's the split between Seattle and King County that varies during a levy period? And then finally, what I mentioned before is how much of our reserves are we able to carry over from this levy period into the next? On the expenditure side, some of the drivers are, what are the number of ALS units and what's the cost for that? What are the escalators that we're projecting? Are we adding any new service? And then finally, what are our expected reserves and contingencies? So taking all of that into, it shows up in this complicated graph, but hopefully I can describe it to you. On the left, the blue, is AV and the range. So what they do in their risk analysis is they say, what's the worst and the least worst-case scenario, and you'll get a range. So they looked at AV, they looked at that new construction that I mentioned, they looked at the split between Seattle and King County, and they looked at inflation and built models on what that split would be. You can't see it very well, and I apologize, I need to fix that. What is important to me is that cumulative impact, and it's, the range is from $31.8 million in the least-laste-worst, and then 76.9 if everything, all four, had the worst-case scenario. Keep that range in mind, because that's important for how we selected our reserves for that factor, so hold that in mind. Okay. This is when you pull it all together, again, including the city of Seattle and run through it. Our total expenditures are expected to be $1.4 billion. Our reserves, both programmatic and then the required rainy day fund that the King County asks us to set aside, is 67.7, for a total expenditure of $1.5 billion. You look at what we can carry forward on the balance outside of Seattle, and it's $64.4 million. We, King County, also has some other revenues, some small amounts of revenue, $17.5 million, that's mostly interest. And then the last piece is at a 25 cent levy rate, we can raise $1.47 billion for a total revenue package of $1.55 billion. The thing that I want to point out is the difference between those two totals, which is $47 million. And if you go back to that risk analysis, it kind of falls right in the middle of that range. And our analysts said, well, it's good to be right in the middle, because not every one of those risks are likely to happen, and for sure, not every single worst-case scenario is supposed to happen either. So we all agreed in the Finance Subcommittee to, that this was a sufficient supplemental reserve to recommend. Almost done. So this slide shows totals for what goes to Seattle and the balance of King County. And the last recommendation that the Finance Subcommittee made was to support this financial plan to the task force at a 25 cent levy rate, raising $1.5 billion. And then in summary, the task force itself supported the Subcommittee Programmatic Recommendations, as I've shared with you, supported a 25 cent levy rate, which estimated cost to a homeowner is about $212 based on an $850,000 home. The length they recommended was six years, which would extend from 2026 to 2031, and they recommended ballot timing of the November 2025 general election. So that's the whole presentation. All happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Halloran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, if you can help me understand on the response times from ALS and BLS, it's counterintuitive to me that ALS, which is much more urgent, would be longer than BLS. Can you help me understand that?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I wish I had my map, because it shows you all the BLS agencies and where their fire departments are and where the resources are. Ton of them all across the county. They're very close to wherever these calls are, and so they can get there first, and they're trained to do all the vitals, to do an assessment of the patient. And our most expensive part of our system are the, is the paramedic layer, and so we strategically put them around the county, and it's okay to have a longer response time, because you've got EMTs there who know how to manage patient care. It's the paramedics who come and give medications, talk to the docs, develop a plan, do more advanced care, but the EMTs are good while they're waiting for the paramedics to show up.
Thank you, so ALS is not first unseen.
Some smaller areas, depends on where the call is. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Very helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So first off, nice job on getting through 29 slides in that amount of time, so appreciate that. My question is, how do you account for housing price fluctuations, in particular, maybe some significant acceleration that we've seen in the past here and there? Is there a certain cap on, you know, a certain cap that is kind of baked in or placed in this area?
Good question, outstanding question, in fact, because we talk a lot about levy rates. The only year that it really matters is that first year, so that's the first year we set it at whatever the rate is that we've recommended. That's the cap. So as we march through a levy period, particularly, for example, when rates are going up, we only collect what we need. We don't collect the maximum. We, it's based off our budget and what we've planned. So for example, right now, in this year, we're at 22.1. We're not at the 26.5 that we started from, that the only year that we collected 26.5 was that first year. After that, we go based on our inflators, that's how we, our expenditures, and then based on what we can collect, or what we need to collect for that budget.
Very much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Great question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for an excellent presentation. Great information all around, very clear. This meeting is recorded, so hopefully for anyone who missed it, they can reference it, especially coming up to the November ballot, so thank you for giving this excellent, well-timed, very informed presentation.
Well, thank you, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Right, Chief, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Would you like to say anything? Sing for your supper, please.
Excellent presentation, as you can tell, this is an amazing system, that we are very fortunate to live in this area, and we keep developing this as we move forward, and so this is a highly important vote, and look forward to serving you in the future under this levy.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, as you said, I was part of the process, and there was a lot of input and a lot of thought put into the process, so, and I encourage other electeds to participate next time around, so we got six more years to wait, but thank you very much.
Yeah.
So...
And so this was just the presentation. Hopefully, at some period down the road, we'll be asking for a resolution to help place this on the ballot, and so let me know if you have any questions or any follow-up. Happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. City of Renton, Renton Police Department and the Renton School District are partnering to sponsor the Steered Straight program on February 27th through 28th at Renton, Hazen, Lindbergh, and Tally High Schools as a regular assembly for students. There will also be a no-cost, no-registration-required parent/community academy presentation by Steered Straight on Friday evening, February 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Lindbergh High School Auditorium. We hope to see a large turnout at this no-cost event. More information can be found at steeredstraight.org. The Renton Police Department is now accepting application. The Renton Police Department is now accepting applications for the Spring Community Police Academy. The academy is hosted Wednesday evenings at City Hall between April 16 and June 4 from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. Deadline to submit your application is Monday, March 3. Please visit rentonlaw.gov/CPA for more information and to submit your application. Join Armando Pavone for the City of Renton's 2025 State of the City Address Wednesday, March 26 at 6:30. The event will take place at the Hyatt Regency Lake Washington at Seattle Southport located at 1053 Lake Washington Boulevard North. Doors will open at 5:30 p.m. and light refreshments will be served. Please RSVP at rentonlaw.gov/sotc. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/tráfico. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. So next up is audience comment. We do have a number of people signed up. I just want to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole. And if you would like a response, be sure to provide your name and email address, including your email address. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When you get to the podium, please state your name and city of residence. And there's a little yellow light that when it turns on, please start wrapping up your comments. And there is a timer in front of you. And so first up is Anisa Gusti.
Hi. This is my first City Hall meeting, so I'm excited to be here. My name is Anisa Gusti. I am here as a Renton resident. I have been a resident for 12 years, and I currently am a resident of Wells Ave North. The topic I am speaking about today is the open drug use at Satori Elementary School. This is happening specifically during morning drop-off. I am a mom of an almost two-year-old and a six-year-old who is a student at Satori Elementary. I walk both of my kids five days a week and am seeing open drug use anywhere from two to three days a week. 10 days ago, on February 14, I saw two people smoking fentanyl with foil, a lighter, and what looked like a straw at the bus stop located on Park Ave directly across from Satori Elementary. There was a huge cloud of smoke that was not even 20 feet away from kids walking to school. I am asking for a police presence three days a week, either at the Shell Station or the Hop Garden parking lot. When our village on Wells Ave was dealing with the 321 situation, I did notice that the increased police presence significantly decreased the open drug activity. And I think that this would be something that would be very proactive in keeping our kids safe. I would like a response to this and look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Am- Next up is Angela Lulainan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Angie Lulainan, and I am a citizen of Renton. We have many streets in Renton which pay homage to our local history and original residents in, of this land. There is a street near Renton High School called Tilicum Road. According to the Renton Historical Society, this street gets its name from the Chinook word meaning friend or family. Chinook was the trade language used by Native Americans to communicate with whites and was spoken by Erasmus Smithers' daughter. The word Tilicum was given to the street because of its significance to our city. The Renton Historical Society article in their June 2019 newsletter calls Tilicum Road "Renton's only remaining place name that is a reminder of the thousands of Duamish people who called this area home before whites arrived." And I have that article here. Another Renton street, Tobin Avenue, was named after Henry Tobin, the first white settler to arrive in this area. He and Erasmus Smithers claimed land under the Donation Land Claim Act and were the first to claim land here as their own. Tobin's wife Diana followed him to this area, but shortly after she arrived, he passed away from illness. Being a widow with a young son, she soon after married Erasmus Smithers. It is said that Smithers employed the Native Americans on his property and allowed them to remain on the property that he had claimed, rather than making them move away like the other owners did. I read that Diana Smithers even chased off government agents who came to move the Native Americans off the property. Now, we have, now, in this time, we have the Renton School District that is taking this land from the current homeowners. This is the very location that the streets of Tobin and Tilicum are located. It is this, is this the legacy Henry Tobin and Erasmus Smithers would have wanted? Tobin and Smithers, founders of our city, shared their land with the original residents. The City of Renton needs to preserve its place names and these streets that were designated to recognize our rich history. Renton School District plans to vacation both of these streets in order to plow over existing homes, evict longtime Renton residents, and displace them from their homes. The city will have to approve the vacation of these streets. Of course, the streets vacations have not been requested yet. But in the pre-app process for this project, all signs point to go. You have the power to oppose this and say that these streets are important. These streets should remain in their entirety in this location. Like Tobin and Smithers allowed the Native Americans to remain in their homes, the City of Renton should hold up the same values for its citizens. Tilicum Road equals value of friends and family. We need help from, we need help to keep this from happening. We need the City of Renton to help protect our neighborhood. And I don't mean at the time they apply for the vacation. I mean now, we need it to be known that this is important to you. I brought this for you and have a copy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Jolynn Amavolago.
Good evening. I'm Jolynn Almoy Wilono. I live in Renton. I understand that some council members have expressed a desire to hear from someone other than Matt and Cheryl, so here I am. However, Matt and Cheryl represent our concerns. And not everyone is comfortable speaking in public, so perhaps that's why you haven't heard other people. I would first like to address the Logan 6 project. I feel like the Logan 6 project is being shoved down our throats. I drive north Third Avenue from Logan at least three times a day. The city's proposed proposal for entry and exit on Third and Fourth will be a traffic nightmare. I don't understand the city's insistence on using Third and Fourth as entry and exit sites instead of on Logan Avenue. It makes no sense. And after the bombshell revelation at the Hearing Examiners Meeting last week about the 84-year-old high-pressure water lines running through the property, it boggles the mind as to why the city would even entertain allowing a structure to be built on that site. Second, all of us would appreciate receiving updates on the Park Avenue building, the Transit Center move, and the Renton High School expansion. We are currently in the dark as to what is happening with these projects. Next, I would like to address the disgusting condition of downtown Renton. It looks like an episode of The Walking Dead. People are doing drugs out in the open, including the doorway of the old Saks on Second Salon directly across from Renton High School during school hours. People are sleeping at the Transit Center and the Piazza and any place they happen to pass out. They relieve themselves on the sidewalks and wander around like zombies. I was speaking with a Parks Department employee the other day who stated they spend more time cleaning up trash, drug paraphernalia, and graffiti instead of doing regular park maintenance. And now we have boarded up houses and businesses on Logan and Airport Way, which I assume are fallout from the unbelievable decision to claim eminent domain on these properties in order to build a baseball field. When I voted for that school levy, I did not vote for people to be forced out of their homes and businesses, uprooting their families and destroying their businesses. Just so you don't think I am critical of everything in the city, I would like to give kudos and thanks to the Renton Police Department for their support and help. In closing, I leave you with a quote from Maya Angelou. "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. People will never forget how you made them feel." Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Matt Hornby.
Okay, Mayor Bone, my last name is Hanby. And one of these times, I'll try to spell it phonetically for you, so. Good evening. Over the past two weeks, I've tried to give the city council the initial benefit of the doubt. And I can tell you, for some on the councils, they still have this benefit. Some are what I would call incomplete, and one still has work to do. That there is doubt comes from a lack of action by this council over the last year, okay? And a general lack of willingness to engage us during this time. But most recently, there are two articles in the Renton Reporter, you may have seen. One is on residents raised concerns about Logan Avenue development. And the second story, story, yeah, is city council passes land use ordinance changes. Now, what the Renton Reporter doesn't report on is that the ordinance change occurred on Monday, February 10, and the public hearing on the land use for Logan 6 occurred on Tuesday, February 11. So for this council to remove itself from potential appeal of the project and to do this the night before the public hearing, you know, all I can say is there's some explaining due to us, okay? And the explanations I have heard so far don't hold water very well. Moreover, I wonder if the council may have violated the Open Public Meetings Act because during the council meeting, they went from first reading to second reading, and it was passed all in the same night. And so knowing the council's desire to have a unified front, it would strike me as odd if the council had not discussed this beforehand. If that did happen and during executive session, then the council may have violated the Open Public Meetings Act, which would invalidate the vote to remove itself from the role in land use appeals. We are here tonight to ask you to adopt a moratorium on development. I sent you an email about this this afternoon with details. And this would be a pause to review, assess, and respond the residents' concerns about the project. This was requested to you in November, when we submitted a petition of 87 signatures from North Renton people, residents. That this request is made to you is based on the very short timeline available. And if you think this is strange, all I can say is, you know, welcome to our world. You voted the night before the public land use hearing to remove yourself from the land use process. And this is what I call being blindsided, okay? And I know as elected officials, that's not something you would like to have. So to me, this project, the city's actions, and the council have violated what I'm calling the covenant. This is a covenant between the City of Renton and the North Renton neighborhood. And this is a covenant between the city council and the North Renton neighborhood. The covenant consists of the community center plan, part of Renton's municipal code, Renton's administrative code on design standards, the city's comprehensive plan, including design standards, council resolution 2708 from a prior council, and your supposed role to make policy decisions for Renton. And until two weeks ago, the council's role in land use appeals. So to me, this this conflict is in conflict, this project is in conflict with the covenant that I just described. And so that is one of the reasons why I hope you will pause the development. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Up is Cheryl Freeze.
I'm going to start my timer as well. Thank you. Believe it or not, I'm actually going to start with a moment of gratitude. So I do want to say thank you to everybody that took time to meet with us. I know it's not a full-time job, yet I hear that it often feels like one. And we really enjoyed the opportunity, and when I say we, Matt and I, to learn a little bit more about those that we did meet with. And even though we didn't necessarily love everything that we heard, we definitely appreciated the time and the commitment to getting to know us as well and our story. So over the last year plus, I know you've all heard ad nauseam, so I'm not going to go into this except for just a quick bullet point is traffic issues, parking issues, linkage. And I apologize, let me go back for a second. Cheryl Freeze, resident of Wells Avenue North, part of the Village, and here to talk on Logan 6. And then the other thing that you've heard about regularly is conflicts with the comprehensive plan, admin code, and city code. What you've also heard is us asking questions about when the project changed to include another property, was the process followed correctly? The other thing you've heard us ask about was the SEPA report completed properly? And were all the other necessary legally required documents submitted and managed correctly? Other things that we're learning as we continue to investigate and peel back the onion on this very lofty proposed development is that Boeing made it really clear in a letter dated October 2022 and at the public hearing that they are concerned about their easements. They're concerned about what will happen should they burst or be impacted or not have access to those. And what they stated is that it's $9 million per hour of loss protection and a potential flooding zone. All I can say is this proposed project, as it exists today, is a square peg in a round hole. Not going to go too much into the Open Meetings Act because Matt addressed that. That's also a great concern of ours. We think in your haste. And again, what we really want the audience to hear is hours before the public hearing, you made an absolutely drastic change to the process, which adversely impacted us. We're learning about the appearance of fairness, which is a doctrine that was designed to guarantee strict procedural requirements are followed. We're also learning about the Admin Procedures Act. We're also hearing for the first time that because 2708 was a resolution and not an ordinance, that it actually doesn't carry any impact. And we would say that if ever this gets escalated and we went back to the original lawsuit and those that wrote this resolution that you all agreed to, that there was implied intent on both sides. And though we heard your intentions weren't nefarious about the act that you passed almost two weeks ago, it definitely looks like bad actor. The last thing that I'm going to say is we've heard that you want to hear other voices. So would everybody in the audience that has opposed Logan 6 as proposed today, please stand? That would be appreciated. Based on all of the above-
Cheryl, I need you to wrap up your comments.
Last sentence. Based on all of the above, we are requesting a moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince?
Thank you so much. So I want to, since the issue that we dealt with came out of my committee, I want to ensure the public, A, our lawyers would never let us violate the Open Public Meetings Act. That's not something that would happen. And B, it was decided in an open committee that is available for the public to attend. So it was all done out in the light. There was nothing done behind closed doors, per se. It was done in the light. The Open Public Meetings Act was not violated in any way, shape, or form. Thank you for that moment, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Next up is John Giuliani.
Hello, John Giuliani, downtown Renton, North First Street, 812 North First Street. Anyway, I'm a pack rat. My house, you come into my house and you'll see all my, I like, I like history. I like feeling my family's feelings from the past. I have picture books from, you know, all my relatives. So I, there's a couple of concepts that that communities, cities do sometimes. They, they try to keep the flavor of the town that's important for them. And I know there's obstacles that I'm not aware of that that change that. I guess the kind of a pride example of that would be like- I guess that the kind of a pride example of that would be like Port Townsend. Of course, that's, that was a white-collar community to begin with, some fishermen as well, but they've, they have guidelines to try to keep the community as it is. Those guidelines also infringe the city on what their abilities to, for growth can be. It can put a, you know, a big boulder in your path. Auburn is the opposite example. Auburn had old Auburn, which was kind of a cool, old funky little town down there. Unfortunately, the fires have changed things, but they're changed, even prior to that, the old hardware store that was there 90 years. It just, the flavor of Auburn is gone. Renton is, unfortunately, I think they're taking that path. Go down to the, next time you're in the post office, you're looking at the, at the counter, you know, waiting for your way. There's a poster on the side there on what Renton, it's been up there for two or three decades now, what the city's proud of. And a lot of those are gone now. And Renton High School is going to be another one of those, which is an absolutely, what's my wording here, gorgeous design architecture. I mean, it's spectacular. Anybody that looks at Renton High School, that's been in my car for my entire life, it's beautiful. So, and I have some family, you know, pride into that, too. My grandpa wired the thing, one of the guys that did that. My dad got kicked out there. That's, that's, you know, for smoking in the bathroom. So anyways, let me get going on the list. I see the color changing up there. So community growth concepts, I'm selfish, I would like to keep as much as we can. For the high school, can you use any other usage for that building so it doesn't have to come down? The, okay, going to Logan Street now, Tobin Street. There was a home down there, and I'm just going to read this. It was called the Berry House. I'm thinking if there are any residences on Tobin and Logan, if those could be used for a concept like this. This is a buddy of mine, 1970, he was one of the guys. Some students were given, this is the Berry House, they called it. It's right next to the tennis courts now on Renton High School grounds on the north end of the building. 215 Tobin. Anyways, they were given responsibilities, the students, there was a handful of students that were given responsibilities to help, give helpful advice to troubled kids. To prep the house, Mark said they spent six-
Wrap up your comments, John, okay?
I'm sorry.
I need you to wrap it up.
You bet, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Anyways, they painted the place inside, which is another, you know, good thing for growing as young people and all that. But a couple of those houses, instead of a baseball field, maybe they could put a Berry House or something. And any of those architecturally designed houses, if this project does go through, can they be moved somewhere for historical thing? Who knows? Anyways, thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Up is Megan Powell.
My name is Megan Powell. I am a lifelong resident of Renton, currently of the Renton Highlands. I'm here to speak in opposition of the Logan 6 development. You're familiar with the concerns. Pretty sure you don't need to hear them again, about parking, the impacts on traffic, the impact of the height, bulk, and mass of a 100-foot-tall building on the visual and perceptual linkages to the Cedar River. In following this, it seems to me that the process was perhaps not followed because of multiple delays and because of staffing changes due to COVID and just the long time that it's been in the approval process. I find it highly likely that there are errors and oversights. Further, the North Renton neighborhood has been denied any legislative representation due to an abrupt policy change by council, removing themselves from the land use appeal process at the 11th hour. The impacts of this development will be irreversible. My North Renton neighbors are deserving of greater consideration and care that they have thus far received in this process. The impacts will be irreversible. It is worth the time to do it correctly with ample public notice, hearing, and comment. I am calling on council to uphold the ordinances previously cited and resolutions put in place by previous elected councils, and to follow established process. Also, to perhaps evaluate the site for another less difficult use, such as a green space. I understand it is a very narrow property, and it takes the full length of Logan between Third and Fourth. I am calling on council to engage in good faith with the people that you were elected to represent. The Renton community has weathered significant hardship and heartbreak in the past several years and months. To remove the view of the tree line at the Cedar River, which has characterized the North Renton neighborhood for generations, as well as to cast homes in the shadow of a 100-foot building, seems both shortsighted and cruel. I urge the council to reconsider the proposed development of this site. And that concludes my remarks.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Sarah Becker.
My name is Sarah Becker. I live in Renton. Moved here in 2001. I'm here today to address the Renton High School expansion project. For those listening who are unaware, the Renton School Board has decided it would be in the best interest of Renton High School to kick out 32 families living to the north and east of Renton High School, forcing them out of their homes with the threat of imminent domain. These historic and well-established homes are targeted to be bulldozed to the ground. One would think, well, why in the world would Renton School Board want to displace so many families and just demolish their homes? Certainly, there must be a good reason to subject people to so much trauma while eliminating the decades of hard work they've put into establishing their homes and their gardens. Certainly, there must be a reason to destroy these affordable, middle-income homes when housing is at such a crisis. The type of housing that HB 1110 identifies as the missing middle-range, single-family homes so desperately needed. Homes that already have infrastructure in place, sewer, gas, and electric lines. The homes aren't waiting to be built. They are built, and they're in use, by real people. These historic homes are within walking distance of Renton High School, mass transit, downtown shops and restaurants, and places of employment. The epitome of the 15-minute neighborhood, reducing the need for a car. These homes line the historic Tobin and Telkum Streets, running east and west, paralleling Airport Way, which, along with Smithers Avenue, are the heart and soul of the founding of Renton as a city. Surely, there must be a compelling reason to cause so much upheaval to families, some public good that justifies condemning 32 homes. Well, if you think that adding some parking and another ball field to the high school grounds is compelling enough to bulldoze homes and erase Renton history, then I guess you're right. But I certainly don't find adding parking and a ball field a compelling reason. And I have to ask myself, how could this be happening again? After hearing heart-wrenching story of John Houston's family, who lost everything due to the Renton School District bullying them off their property 30 years ago. We need to keep affordable, single-family homes in downtown Renton and preserve the history of Renton. We do not need to destroy single-family homes and plow down historic Tobin and Telkum Streets. We also need the city of Renton council members, elected by the people, to represent the people, to make a stand for the future of Renton, and work with the school board to identify options that will allow these historic homes to remain. Some common master plan of development that benefits all citizens of Renton. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Tracy Adio.
Adio, I live on Pelly Avenue. I'm a teacher for Renton School District. And I, I'm sorry, Michelle left. I wanted to thank her for her presentation. This is the first time I'd seen that. And I got to visit with her for a few minutes beforehand, and she explained how every five years they do this, because she feels the, the public should know also where, where the taxes and how the levy works, and where the money's going to go, and if they really need to kind of change some things. And she likes, she said she needs to, or she feels that she owed, they owe it to us, all of us, to know what is going on, instead of keeping things maybe, it's already approved, they don't need to tell us anymore. And I feel like that's what's happening here. We're not hearing from you. Emails are going unanswered. If your hands are tied and can't help in the Logan 6 issue, let us know. That's all. Just let us know. That's what- Representing the residents of Renton and fighting for our needs has been my top priority. This is just one council member. I know all of you probably said this when you ran for this. Our city is blessed with tremendous energy and prosperity, but faces many challenges requiring strong leadership and can, and commitment to develop smart policy solutions. I have worked to ensure Renton is a place to, for people, people are proud to call home, focusing on the issues that truly impact Renton residents' everyday lives. This will impact us every day with having 100-unit apartment go up, and they're not putting enough parking in. And they can't go across Logan, and they can't go Cedar River, and then they got Boeing on one side. There's only one way, east, to go. And it's such a small area for them to do that. Disappointed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next up is Mark DeBos.
Good evening. I'm Mark, and I live in North Renton. I have some concern with the Logan 6 project. And first of all, you know, I know it's hard to stop progress, and we need more housing, and nobody wants more housing next to their house. And there are no perfect solutions, there's only trade-offs. It's just life. I do have a concern with the amount of parking with the building. My understanding is this will be a 100-unit building, and many of those units will have two or three bedrooms. And from what I hear, it will have one parking space per unit, even though it maybe have more than one adult who drives. So that's just my concern, is the parking. It may very well be in compliance. I don't pretend to know what the codes and regulations are, but Logan 6 probably will not be the last building of its size to be put in the city. And it's going to change the character of the neighborhood if we have so many cars out on the street, because there isn't adequate parking at some of these buildings. Just imagine a 100-unit building being plopped down into a neighborhood where a typical block has maybe 18, 20 homes. There's no way it can't have an impact. And so I just, you know, it may be too little, too late for this, I don't know. But certainly, looking forward, moving forward, that would be behoove, I think, of the city to look into having more parking required on some of these big buildings. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we're on to the consent agenda. There are 16 items for council consideration. Are there any that you would like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Here is now a move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved by Council President Albertson, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's not necessarily on the, on the schedule here, but I wanted to make a point regarding a lot of communications we've gotten about the impending asphalt plant that has been, that's supposedly going to be built on Maple Valley Highway. Just for anybody who's, who has a concern, anybody out there listening, I don't think there's anybody actually on, on the dais here that is in favor of the asphalt plant. You know, last year, we actually asked administration to look into the possibility of imminent domain and that sort of thing. But it boils down to the fact that, after looking into it, it's simply not, not feasible. I won't get into the, the details of it. Recently, it seems that there's been some information put out on social media that, in all actuality, is misinformation. And I will repeat, I will repeat that. It is misinformation that a lot of people are acting on and taking it for gospel. And unfortunately, we feel, I feel, they're being led astray. And to that end, the administration is going to put some sort of a, working on a communication that's going to go out to the public, that really does lay out exactly what the situation is, what we can do, what we can't do. And I think that's worth just kind of putting out there, because there are a lot of people who are under the impression that, I guess, that we're kind of sitting back and letting it happen, just because, eh, it's okay. But that's not the case. Through all the experts, well, I won't go into the communication, but basically, the concern that's been put out there is, is very, 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 very likely unwarranted, and a lot of people are going off of what essentially is incorrect information. We want to make sure that everybody knows that. I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Per tradition, I don't have any unfinished business in terms of our committee, but I want to ask your advice in terms of just commenting on what our community members had commented. Would you want me to save it for this, for the new business section, or am I able to?
This is unfinished business.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait for new business.
Okay, Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee has two reports this evening.
Okay. Finance Committee, Committee Report. The first is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Council payable total payment of $9,377,309.46 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers. And two is payroll, total payment of $22,204.06 for 674 direct deposits and three checks. This is the January 16th through 31st pay period. And finally, municipal court vouchers totaling $33,444.34. This is signed by the committee chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven. The council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding a grant for the 116th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Project. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the grant agreement with Transportation Improvement Board, TIP, totaling $303,890 for the 116th Avenue Southeast Sidewalk Project, which is TIP number 2405.1. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and approved virtually by the member.
Mr. Mayor.
O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, second by Councilmember McGurven. The council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to-
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you.
I was going to say your name.
Okay. My apologies. I just wanted to say there's no unfinished business. But I did want to add, for all of who are out there, as the Chair of Public Safety, we are doing monthly updates. Every public safety meeting, we will be having an update on Six and Park. Those meetings are open to the public, and they are available via Zoom. And just sharing that information, that Six and Park will be an ongoing conversation as long as I am Chair of Public Safety at every meeting, to ensure that we are staying up to date with everything. And we had an update today, and I appreciate everyone sharing their concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're on to legislation, and we have none. So we're going to move on to new business. I'll start with you, Council President Albertson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On February, Thursday, February 27th, this Thursday, and Friday, we will have the council retreat. The location will be Maplewood Greens, there at the Maplewood Golf Course in Renton. That will be at 8:30, starting at 8:30 both days. And on March 3rd, next Monday, the committee of the whole will be meeting in the council conference center. And there's one item on the agenda, and that is a legislative update. And then at 7 o'clock, we'll have the regular council meeting here in council chambers and via video- in council chambers and via video conference. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Van.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For new business per the Utilities Committee, uh, for the meeting on March third, twenty twenty five, it's been canceled. And I have a few other new businesses, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank our community for coming to speak. And the issue of Logan six has, six has been a long process and it shouldn't have been. When our communities have spoken for over a year plus. As I have had toil, had really go through the process of having to vote, uh, why I made my vote last time. In terms of our ordinance, I still believe that is appropriate because of if we can't get the work done, we can't hear community, then the lessening the timeframe is important for me. Making sure that there is remedy, there is adjudication to any process, as speedy process. With that said, I am asking my council, um, I, I am, I move that the council concur, um, with a moratorium on the development for Logan Avenue North from Cedar River to North Sixth Street until, um, until we get more information, um, from the development in our city staff. And I would, um, moratorium, so let me repeat. A moratorium, I request a motion for moratorium on development for Logan Avenue North from Cedar River to North Sixth Street.
So, um, first of all, can I have, ask the city attorney to clarify? I don't believe we can put a moratorium on a single property, can we?
I believe, I believe it would be considered spot zoning.
Yep.
And I think it would not be a wise decision.
Yep. So if you'd like to change your motion, you can't, we can't do a moratorium on a single project.
Yeah, so let me go ahead and change it. I motion for a moratorium on any projects, um, that is happening, that, that's on Logan Ave. North from Cedar to North Street.
That's still spot zoning. You'd have to put a moratorium on all developments.
Okay. How about a moratorium on developments for the streets on boundaries of the North Renton neighborhoods?
I'm not hearing a second. I'm going to move on to, um, Councilmember Prince.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I did say I have a few. So I, um, and thank you colleagues for entertaining, uh, my thought process and motion. I think it's important. I'm glad the city attorney, uh, helped enforce that because we definitely don't want to do that. So I asked my colleagues then, as we're hearing community and we're listening to not just one time, but many, many times, through the course of roughly two years or so, and we've gone through a global pandemic together. I'm asking for a moratorium on developments in our city for the next six months.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have been a part of a lot of the conversations with, um, with, that's been going on to this. I understand there are a lot of concerns around this. And for sake of conversation only and discussion for the city, because we should be transparent and explain our reasoning to the residents here, I will second this motion for sake of conversation.
Okay.
So. Councilmember Van, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah.
Yes, um, I think that there are not just this particular, um, project Logan six. But I think as we went through a global pandemic, like I mentioned, it's time for us to really reflect. We haven't really reflected on a lot of the projects. I think giving us time to reflect on all of our projects, um, you know, from the Renton Pavilion to all the multitude of projects and constructions that we've had. And looking at the, the line, multiple ordinances that have been passed with previous council, and also adhering to our, uh, promise to the, the residents of, of this, um, city in terms of, um, preserving the character of, of neighborhoods. Know we've done this many times where we have done that on other projects. And in general, I think it's important to just reflect on, uh, as we move forward on, on develop, new developments in our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Ah, yes, City Attorney.
I apologize, Patrice Kent from the City Attorney's Office. I apologize for not, um, having this teed up. I hadn't expected it. In order to pass a moratorium, the city does have to have this as an ordinance. And there are public hearing requirements. I'm providing that just for background information.
Yep, thank you.
And for my part in this, and the reason I seconded is I know that this has been an ongoing conversation. I will share that eminent domain should not be used lightly. And it opens, it can open up a city to a lot of risk and liability. And what I will refer is that there have been other cities that have mismanaged this and they are now facing the consequences. As a result, I do not believe, and I'm saying this wholeheartedly, knowing I've had conversations with some of you. I do not believe that this would be in the best interest of our city in terms of the liability and your tax dollars of which it would open us up to. We are also supposed to be good stewards of your tax dollars. And I know that there's a lot of contentious conversations and I really want to validate and say, I understand where you all are coming from. And unfortunately, after conversations and looking into this, a moratorium is just not going to be possibly the best avenue for the city going forward due to the liability and risk that would open us up to. And that would be also the liability and risk to your tax dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Just for clarification, you, you started by saying eminent domain. You were talking about moratorium the whole time.
Yep, I, I did do that. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for correcting me. It's been a long night.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I just want to address the issue. And please, please don't think that we're impassionate or standoffish. We, we have so many restrictions on what we can and cannot do in these circumstances. But I, since we are having an open discussion, I really want to address the parking issue. We cannot override what the state tells us to do. We have no choice. So I'm, I, I totally get that one unit per, one parking space per unit is inadequate. There's nothing we can do. That's a state requirement. So I apologize if that's been a mis, point of misunderstanding. But I feel it's important for you guys to hear our pain also and what we are required to do. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember McGurven. Can I, can I clarify? Did I hear the motion correctly was six months moratorium on all development?
Yes.
On all development, it's not necessary this development.
To me, I would say in the middle of a housing crisis, I find that motion a little bit unconscionable to that we would shut down development when we know we have a massive deficit in affordable housing. Whether or not this particular project, um, is the appropriate place for that, I think is certainly for us to decide. And I understand the intention of trying to, to help out in this one scenario. But I don't think it makes sense practically or pragmatically to move forward with something that broad. I would much rather discuss perhaps an executive session with the council or attorney or the legal risks of some of the implications of these before we charge ahead making motions. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we take a vote on this?
Yes, again, to clarify, I do apologize for confusing eminent domain and moratorium. Rookie mistake on my part, absolutely, in terms of the confusion between the two. With, and with using a moratorium on new developments, that's the other part of this is again, in the housing crisis with everything that's going on right now, hopefully, and I would beg of us to really look at retrospectives that have been asked of us to make sure that we are growing our city strategically and we are learning from these lessons, especially in how we are communicating going forward. And so I hope that this discussion has offered a little bit more clarity. We are always available. And again, I am sorry for your frustrations. I truly, truly am.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Prince.
Uh, thank you. So I spent some time on Friday, uh, meeting with Matt and Cheryl. And I thought we had a, a very good productive meeting. And like my colleagues, I do empathize with, with you all and everything you've been going through and the fact that we've not been able to talk to you for the better part of a year. And I mean no disrespect when I say this, um, about the motion. This is a gimmick. And we can't operate a city this large, over a hundred thousand people with developments that impact all facets of our communities on something like this. That, that we just can't do that. I, and so for that reason and that reason alone, I'll be voting no on this because in a city of over a hundred thousand people saying that you're going to halt all development for six months can have tremendous, tremendous, tremendous impact on us. And people can decide that they want to go to other places to make, do the developments. And that has an economic impact on the city. So I, I just can't vote for this.
Thank you, yes, Councilmember Van.
Yeah, thank you colleagues for your comments. Um, I, I, um, like I said, as I started my motion with specific, and I welcome any, um, you know, amendments in addition if, if it's too broad. But certainly it's, um, what we're hearing from community. And I think it's also wise to look at this process on, um, the community standpoint of folks having to, uh, not necessarily just one project after another, right? If you don't appreciate the six months, I'm welcome to any feedback in terms of, you know, going about to problem solve this issue for not just the displacement or the issue of our current resident or community members, but of course, always welcoming in new neighbors. But I think it, it's front, center that we have, uh, a crisis in, in terms of our community and in, in the, um, the developments that, that's happening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilperson Albertson.
You know, trying out to repeat some of the, uh, points that have been made. I, I, but I will say I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember McGurven. Whether it's six months, three months, it is not practical for a moratorium on all development projects in the city. That is not something that, um, you would want to put on those who are waiting and looking for housing and things like that. From the economic standpoint, that, that approach has been done by cities and, and maybe they were smaller than us, but it has bankrupted some cities from the subsequent, uh, lawsuits and things such as that. So understand that when we, when we say this, it's not just because we don't want to. There are practical, pragmatic, um, legal, economic reasons why that is simply not possible. In this case, this is one of them. The other point that I, and I understand, look, I totally understand the, the plight and the frustration. And for, for several reasons, you know, normally this, this project would not have taken even as long as it's taken. And if you talk to any of our people in our CED department, it has taken that long because of trying to work with, uh, the North Renton neighborhood, trying to actually figure out a way to do it. Personally, I've sent answers out addressing some of these issues, uh, to some of the individuals who are bringing this up. And it's like, they, they're just ignored. One of the reasons why it's not on Logan Avenue is because, because of the transit stop that's there. It is not, we cannot put it on Logan Avenue. I did not know that. I found that out. Okay, well, I guess that makes sense. My, my worry is that some of this information is going out and it is not all being shared accurately with all those involved. Maybe because it's not what's, what, what is desired as far as what, what you want to hear. And sometimes that's the case and it's unfortunate. But it is factual in that some of the things and some of the decisions that have been made, it's because that was the only option to do so. I will, I do want to say something and you may believe me, may not. But I feel as though council has been, I feel as though some accusations have been unfair. For a long time, there were individuals saying, well, they're hiding behind the fact they can't talk to us because of this appeal process and that sort of thing. Well, we heard that. And we looked at it and we actually said, hey, maybe this is something that, uh, that we, we, we should take away. We, we, we do, we don't want to be handcuffed, be able to talk, to hear some of these issues. And we changed that. It was not a nefarious thing. It was not a clandestine move. Apologies for the timing that when it came about and the hearings the next day. And then all of a sudden, oh, they did that on purpose. That is simply not the case. That is simply not the case. I will, I, I will go down in flames saying that nobody had those intentions. I promise you that. I am a man of my word. That is not the case. I hate the timing that, that, that it happened that way. It did. Honestly, can't say if, on appeal, we can't take new evidence from what the hearing examiner hears. So there's no guarantee in that instance. But I just want to go back to the accusation or the inference, I guess, uh, or the implication on inference, implication that that was, um, a, a move. It was not a move. It was something that was just done in response to what we are hearing. So take that for what, for what it is. For more than happy, I'm more than happy to hear and, and, and discuss these things. There are some facts out here that have not been shared, it seems like, because there's some misinformation, like the parking thing. I think that is just so silly. It is silly and it is, those are decisions happening at the state level. And the one thing I will say is I look, maybe it's a little bit harder. You don't have to go down to Olympia, but let your state representative hear from you on things like that. Because they are making those decisions and it's going to be even less, like half a parking space. No logic, no sense whatsoever. But like Councilmember, uh, O'Halloran said, we can't do anything about that. I would change that in a heartbeat. It is absolutely, excuse my friend, asinine. But it is what it is right now. So that, that's all I want to say. And, and once again, while I'll be voting no on it, but we, we have to, we have to work with the, with the confines within which we, um, were placed for these and other decisions.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, to add, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council President Albertson, for all of that. I agree. And that's why I want, I second the motion so we could just have this out and open conversation for everyone. And I think it's so refreshing and I appreciate it. I do want to say like we were in, uh, many of us were in Olympia last week, meeting with our legislators. Many of us were sharing that we don't appreciate, right, the new parking requirements that are being proposed that would then minimize it down to half a spot versus one or however it stands today, which is part of the concerns that are being raised here. That's at the Washington State legislative level. We can go and talk to our legislators and as, as you, and we are doing the best that we can with, in our own roles. And so I don't know if that's always very clearly communicated. Again, I don't know if all the right facts. I know there's a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of people that just want to get people riled up. And I implore you right now to always take a moment, take a breath, make a phone call. I know many of you have our phone numbers. Feel free to call us and utilize that. Please, I would love to hear my phone go off just a little bit more. Thank you.
All right, it sounds like everybody, uh, has, has weighed in. So, um, the last thing I do want to say is, is, you know, there's been some implication that council isn't receptive. And I can tell you that the council does contact the administration, um, when you reach out to them. They're all very concerned with what, um, your concerns are. And staff takes it seriously too. You know, we've got amazing people that work here at the city of Renton and they take their job very seriously and they do a fantastic job. And it is frustrating sometimes. I mean, as James said, it's, it's frustrating when they make decisions in Olympia that affect us down here, uh, whether it's parking or is some of the zoning requirements that they've taken away. Even the open drug use that was talked about earlier. We had to go down there and fight to get them to, to criminalize, um, open air drug use. So, um, some of the things that go on in our city are unfortunately out of our control. But we do hear you and we want to make these projects that are in the city, the best possible project possible. And, and work with the community and get input on the changes that need to be made. And the council definitely listens to you because they definitely call us. So, um, with that, I think it's time to vote. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Aye.
All right, motion does not pass. So we're going to move on to Councilmember Prince.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no, uh, new business.
Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, Thursday, five P M. in the council conference room and via video conference. There are six items on the agenda. First supplemental agreement number two, the CAG twenty four two six eight Professional Services Agreement with Transpo Group USA Incorporated for Engineering Design Services for the Oaksdale Avenue Southwest Pavement Preservation Project. That was just one item. Second, Professional Services Agreement with Partit Incorporated for Preliminary and Final Design Services for the City of Renton Sunset Trail Project. Third, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six ORCA Business Cards and Business Passports Products Agreement. Fourth, Addendum eight dash two. Fourth, Addendum 8-25 to LAG 934 with BHC Incorporated. Fifth Amendment 7-25 to LAG 12-4 with Bossair LLC. And finally, six emerging issues in transportation. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. And I think I summed up most of my comments. I'll just close by speaking, by saying, I'm happy to stick around if people want to have a one-on-one versus hashing this out up here is a little bit less formal, but I'm happy to share further thoughts with folks after the meeting or connect with me afterwards. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
No un, excuse me, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Rivera.
No new business, Mr. Mayor, except for a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, it's been, it's.
Forty-five seconds. I, I know I'm out of order, but.
Yeah, we're going to close the meeting up, and then you'll be able to talk to whoever you want here. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? All right, we're adjourned.